I think we lost that last year when she
Right.
Something with the school.
Lost the chance.
Well, that was a one to five presentation.
Grade one to five?
Yeah.
Not quite. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the school committee for March 16th to order. I'd like to read aloud, oh, it's seven o'clock, sorry. I'd like to read our mission statement. The Douglas Middle School offers diverse learning experience to meet the academic, social, and physical, and emotional needs of all students. We provide a safe and supportive and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of students. I'd like to rise and do a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing that there is none, I'll close public comment. I'm going to do a selfish plug, though, since we have a captive audience. We have two school committee openings that will be taking place. The elections will take place in May, but to get your nomination paperwork is due Tuesday to Town Hall. Thank you.
Can I do a selfish plug?
Absolutely.
So there is a recent graduate of this school, my son, and his team right now, Bryant, where he went to college, is actually playing in the March Madness right now as we speak, so, pretty cool.
Awesome.
Very cool.
So we have some, we have no old business, right, Dr. Vera, to go over?
We do not.
So we're going to open it up to new business, but before we get to the superintendent's report, I'd like to move the Douglas Middle School eighth grade out-of-state field trip to Can- uh, Canopy Lake. If the individuals could come up and talk to us, we'd greatly appreciate it.
The eighth grade would like to take a field trip to Canopy Lake Park as a culminating middle school event. We are planning on going June 16th, 2022. The park is located at 85 North Policy Street in Salem, New Hampshire. It will take approximately one hour and 15 minutes to get there by bus. We will be leaving from Douglas Middle School at 7:30 a.m. and returning at 4:15 p.m. All students will be required, required to ride to Canopy and back on the buses provided. Parents will be picking up their children at 4:15 from Douglas Middle School. We will be reserving two coach buses from FTI Coach as soon as this trip is approved. Tickets will be ordered as soon as this trip is approved, and the final ticket number will be finalized upon arrival. The cost for the committee to this park will be approximately $25 per person. The total cost of the buses is $1,175. There are additional funds available for any student with financial hardship. The cost per child will not exceed $40. The student-to-chaperon ratio will be approximately 1:10 to 1. We will be meeting with all chaperones prior to the trip to explain their responsibilities the day of the field trip. The students will check in with their chaperones every two hours at a certain located place. A nurse will be located at this spot throughout the day.
Anyone on the committee who have any questions?
Just a question for the district. Since a nurse will be provided, is that going to be a substitute nurse? We may have somebody fill in in the building?
Is there going to be a substitute nurse that's going? Okay.
Do we have somebody secured already?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
And I was just curious, um, the chaperones, are they parents or teachers?
Teachers.
Teachers, okay.
And Mrs. Keegan says she wants to go. We had a big discussion about it today. She's very excited.
I just know in the past, parents have been chaperones because I was one.
Me too.
I was just curious about the one to ten. They do have both, it's teachers and parents if they'd like to volunteer for it, so.
Any, any other? I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the middle school eighth grade out-of-state field trip to Canopy Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire on Thursday, June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, second by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful time.
Have fun.
And now we're going to circle back to have the student representatives, Ava Sartori and A- Adi Acosta, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ava Sartori, and I am here with Adriana Acosta. We are both student council members from the middle school. We have been busy the last two months at the middle school. February went by fast with school vacation as a nice break for everyone. The afternoon before break, we had a school-wide activity. Students chose medic ball in the gym, musical chairs and dance revolution in the cafeteria, board games and music in the cafeteria, or a scavenger hunt around the school. This was a great community-building afternoon and a fun way to kick off school vacation. Winter sports at DMS have ended, and there are several sports this spring. Track is starting up, and there are many students who love to show school pride through this sport. We are also looking forward to seeing our students play for the JV and varsity baseball and softball teams this year.
St. Patrick's Day is approaching, so the middle, the student council is selling green flowers at lunch. The student council is also starting an exciting school-wide event, March Madness. For this, we have teams of three in a tournament-style competition of three, the free throw shooting. We have also decided to try to present a fundraiser for Ukraine by selling ribbons. On Friday, March 4th, the eighth grade has walked into the high school for a tour and started the course selection process for ninth grade. Monday was Pi Day, and each grade did a fun activity in math surrounding this topic. The kids are working really hard in eighth grade this month. For starters, in science, the kids have started to understand how sexual and asexual reproduction works in all types of plants and animals, and they had a test on it today. In math, system of equations with substitution is being taught, and they had a quiz on the topic earlier today. In civics, students have picked out court cases and are learning more about them and presenting them in the class. In Spanish, the kids recently have been taught about their families and had a te- and are having a test on it tomorrow. They've also started a musical competition where the students listen to different types of Spanish music and vote on their favorites. Seventh grade is working hard this year. In math, the students are learning about percent proportions. In writing, the students are reading a Martin Luther King Jr. packet while discovering how to use alliteration and repetition in their paragraphs. In science, students are reading packets about different biomes. In history, students are being taught about civilizations and ancient schooling.
In sixth grade news, the sixth grade is really persevering this year, tackling challenging new concepts in all subjects. In science, students have just finished learning about the functions of seafloor spreading and plate tectonics. Now, they are learning about cells. In world history, students are learning about Christianity, Islam, and Judaism. The sixth grade is writing an expository writing piece on the discovery of the Titanic's wreck in writing class. Students have just started learning how to multiply fractions in math and will soon be learning how to divide fractions. Student of the Month. This month, the DMS staff picked out a variety of students who have really contributed to the community and helped make this year better. The students were treated to a nice breakfast with their family and the ceremony to celebrate. As we are well underway in quarter three of our school year, the progress reports were just released as of last Friday. This concludes our report. Thank you for the opportunity to share what's going on at Douglas Middle School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Great job.
Good job.
Now for the superintendent's report, please.
All right. You've heard Ms. Sosha and Mr. Bell talk about this great program that we have with our first graders and our fifth graders doing a connection. I thought it'd be good, you've heard a lot about it, but we haven't heard from the kids who are actually doing it. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to bring up some of our first and fifth graders and share with the committee and anyone who's watching a little bit about this great program that we've had since September. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bell, Ms. Sosha, and our first and fifth grade guests.
And we're going to let them do the talking, so I'm just going to let them go.
We meet the first graders every month to help the first graders have fun and learn. We help the first graders with writing, math, reading, and teamwork. Writing, math, reading, and teamwork are very important skills for first graders to learn.
When we meet with the first graders, we do many activities to teach them school-related things. The fifth graders help the first graders with adding and subtracting, reading comprehension, problem-solving, writing organization, and communication. For math, we did a card game to help them with math skills. For, for writing, we wrote letters for Valentine's Day and Christmas. We did the snowman activity, this, when we did the snowman activity, the snowman would keep falling over so we'd, so we need to problem-solve and come up with a plan. For reading, we read them books and showed the first graders the pictures to help them understand. The fifth graders had to use teamwork to pass the book to the next person to read.
When the fifth graders met the first graders, everybody enjoyed meeting new people. The fifth graders like to see what the first graders are learning when they see them every month. We enjoy watching the first graders work as a team. Encouraging the first graders to work hard and try your best is something the fifth graders do.
Overall, meeting with the first graders has been an amazing experience for everyone. When each grade meets, they enjoy collaborating with each other and working as a team. When we first met the first graders, we knew that this would be a great opportunity.
Nice job.
Good job, you guys.
Yes, and kudos to Mr. Bell. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, do we have a slide deck?
We do. I think Mr. Bell already worked on it.
Okay.
Video pictures? So now we get the first grader side of the story? And see if it actually holds up?
The real side of the story, yes.
My name is Millie Deegan. I am seven years old. My teacher is Mrs. Lancaster. I like when the fifth graders made the snowmen with me. I can't wait to have a picnic with them. Thank you for letting me have fun.
My name is Julian Bostovka. I'm seven years old. My teacher is Mrs. Murchin. I liked when the fifth graders made cards with us. I can't wait to get a tour of their school.
My name is Aubrey Doyan. I am six years old. My teacher is Miss Matcha. I like when the fifth graders made the snowmen with me. I can't wait to have a picnic with them.
My name is, my name is Braden Longchamp. I am six years old. My teacher is Miss Matcha. I like when the fifth graders played math games with me. I can't wait to get a tour of the school. It will be so much fun.
Awesome job.
Does anybody have any questions for our first or fifth graders or for Ms. Sosha or I?
What's your favorite part, Mr. Bell, Ms. Sosha?
I, they're always happy. They get on the floor, they're playing together, they're smiling, um, they can't get enough of it. So I like seeing the smiles on their faces. I like working with Ms. Sosha, too, so that's good.
It's been an awesome experience. They look forward to it every single month. They don't know what's coming up. The teachers have also taken turns, so one month is the first grade team that plans it. The next month, it's the fifth grade team that teaches. So it's been great on all ends, students and teachers.
And as we get going into the spring here, um, the March one is going to be where the first graders come do recess with the elementary kids on the elementary playground, and we teach them kind of the rules. And so we're going to start doing some transitional things to get ready for next year as they come into the elementary school. So we're excited about that, too. We're doing lunch at some point also, so.
That's awesome. Step-up day. A tour of the building is what they're looking forward to.
Well, the eight of you made, this is like the nicest part of any meeting, I think, that we've had, at least in the past three years. So the eight of you made it super awesome. That was great reading.
Yes.
I mean, good job to the fifth graders reading, too, but like for you four, that was amazing reading. Good job. Thank you so much for coming.
So a big shout-out to, uh, Ms. Sosha, Mr. Bell, for having this program. It's great to see what the community is doing and just having this little collaboration, I know, is a good building step, stepping stone for the future, what we're going in the district, so this, this warmed my heart.
As fun as my COVID-19 update is, I will not be offended if people leave.
All the student presenters.
Stay, please stay. I understand.
Wow, you really know how to empty a room, right?
Clear it. COVID-19, bye. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
All you had to do was mention COVID and you emptied out the room.
Story of our life, right?
Story of our lives, correct. Well, I'm pleased to say, I think the COVID-19, uh, reports should be, should be dwindling. Um, we're two and a half weeks into being mask optional. Like I reported two weeks ago, we really haven't seen any issues. The kids have been fantastic. They've been supportive of each other. We still have the same 10, 15% of our student population, staff population, deciding to mask, which is fine. Everyone's been supporting everyone. We still have our, you know, testing mitigation program going on where every two weeks, we have 500 students and about 110, 120 staff members receiving test kits to take home on Sundays. We're still doing our pool testing with the help of our nurses and the CIC. And we're still asking parents, as, as we have, to, um, you know, if kids are sick and you don't feel good, please, please stay home. So, um, I hope that in another couple of weeks, we can just cross that right off of the, the agenda. Again, want to remind people that, um, it hasn't gone away. We still do have students who are testing positive and adults who are testing positive, but we're at the point now where I think people are going to live with it, which, which is great. Any questions on, I know that the kids were tough acts to follow, so, uh, any questions on the COVID-19 piece of it? All right. Next, I'm going to ask Tara Sobolewski to come up and do a brief overview and update on our special education program, basically reviewing what we've done this year and really giving you a look ahead into what we have planned for the 22, 23 school year.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I want to talk about our special education programming for our school year coming up. But before we do that, just reviewing what we currently have in place in each of our buildings for programming. Um, so right now, if we're looking at our primary school, we have integrated preschool for our three-to-five-year-olds. Um, so that's a fully integrated program, either full or half-day, where students with disabilities receive their services alongside their non-disabled peers. At this time, we don't have any substantially separate options for preschoolers. Across each building, we have co-teaching, where special education teachers providing instruction alongside general ed teachers within the general education classroom. And then we have different sub, sub-separate programs outside of the general education setting in each of our buildings. Um, so at the primary school, we have one flex program, which services students with social, emotional, and developmental disabilities, excuse me. At the elementary school, we have two different flex programs, one serving students with social, emotional, and developmental disabilities, and one servicing students with more significant disabilities. The elementary school also has an academic center that was developed essentially to meet the needs of language-based learning disability students. The great thing about co-teaching is it reduces the time that students need to receive services outside of the general education setting. So at this point, that academic center is really servicing more of, like, the overflow, if you will, of pull-out services for students who are receiving the majority of their services within the general education classroom, as opposed to being in that classroom all day. The middle school, still co-teaching at each level. Um, each grade has, you can, you can go back, John. That's okay. Right there. You're good. Um, each grade has a special educator assigned to it that supports the inclusion and co-teaching services, and then some pull-out secret services, but the majority of those secret services or services outside of the gen-ed setting are delivered by the teachers in our flex program or our academic center. The flex program at the middle school is currently servicing about 15 students with social, emotional, behavioral needs, as well as significant modifications to the curriculum. And then the academic center at the middle school is servicing students with significant modification needs outside of the gen-ed setting. The high school, we also have two flex programs, mostly focusing on students with social, emotional, behavioral needs that can't be met within the classroom or significant modifications. And then we have a Stars and Stripes program. So I know we call Stars for our, our younger students at the high school, being the ninth through 12th graders, and our Stripe students being the students who are receiving services in the 18 to 22-year-old range. Right now, they are receiving their services together within one classroom with one teacher. Um, and we've been able to do that because we filed waivers, because they do exceed the 48-month age restriction for, for classes. So just moving forward to next year. Go ahead, John. Um, moving forward to next year, the question I get asked a lot is what is the difference between flex academic center versus what the special education teachers assign to each grade level provide, which is a great question. At this point, it, um, it kind of ebbs and flows of what's happening at each building just because of the size of our population, that, you know, one year is going to look a little different to the next based on the student population. And students might experience going from the primary school, where they're receiving services from a flex program, to when they go to the elementary school, they might be slated for an academic center program. Where in the middle school, that population serviced by a flex program. So we spend a lot of time talking about what are our flex programs. We know that one of the biggest parts of the programming for flex is that it's flexible, hence the name. So we really landed on, if we had to describe flex to someone outside of the district or even inside of the district, that those programs are meeting the needs of all students who can't be appropriately serviced within the full inclusion model, just due to the nature and severity of their disability. Not necessarily that each flex classroom, if you will, is going to look just like the next flex classroom. Um, so in some instances, we're servicing students with social, emotional, um, needs that can't be met within the classroom, and that might mean receiving some services within a flex classroom, going in there to receive their services. And for others, that might mean they're getting all of their services and inclusion, but if for whatever reason they need to access a therapeutic setting, that they have the ability to go into that setting and then integrate back into their classroom. Um, it also is giving students the opportunity to access secret services for students who need significant modifications to their content area instruction. So I'm a big supporter of co-teaching, but co-teaching is not for everyone. There are going to be students who need things so significantly modified that it's best done outside of the general education setting, and that can also happen within a flex classroom. The other piece of that is just the developmental and adaptive daily living skills that some of our students need. So just getting that direct instruction outside of the general ed classroom for the majority of their day because that's essentially what, what they need, what's most important to their educational programming at this point. So we're starting to think, or shift the thinking to the flex program, if you will, as classroom by classroom, as opposed to every flex, um, program looks the same. So that we accommodate for the bubble grades, the differences in student, um, profiles as they're coming up through grades, when, you know, you have a big bubble of students with a certain profile in fifth grade and they move to sixth grade, that now changes your programming, what's left at the elementary school. So looking forward to next year, um, at the primary school, no real changes there in their population. Um, the integrated preschool program will revisit at another time. Ms. Sosha's still working on enrollment for next year. Right now, in the K-1 program there in the inclusion setting, we have one teacher servicing both grades, and she's providing the in-classroom support as well as some pull-out services for students, but the majority of the students are fully included. We have one flex classroom there, and that's run by a severe special educator servicing three students at the moment, and we have no anticipated changes in that model for next year. Um, at the elementary school, we're looking at some changes next year. Like I said, we have co-teaching. We have two flex classrooms. Um, the population of students is going to be a little bit different at the elementary school next year just because of students, um, moving buildings next year. Um, so one classroom is going to be focused primarily on that social, emotional, therapeutic setting for students, both who need their instruction within that setting and for those who need to access it on an ongoing basis. And then the other one will be focusing more on that adaptive daily living, functional academics, as well as for students who need any substantial modifications to the curriculum. The academic center right now, like I was saying, has more of like the overflow of secret services, if you will, that the inclusion teachers are not able to fit into their schedules. An area that we want to see improve programmatically, at least at the elementary school level, is just a designated special educator who's providing reading services for students. So right now, when we have a second, third, fourth, and fifth grade inclusion special educator delivering reading services, reading services are tricky to deliver if kids are on different levels. It's, it's, it's hard to do a systematic approach using, using a research-based curriculum if you're trying to attack too many different angles at the same time. So the thought process behind having one special educator will be, one, the continuum of services from second through fifth grade, but two, that they could group students so that it's not constantly a student needing to have their instruction one-on-one, that they could be with peers, might not be in their same class, might not be in their same grade, but working on the same skills with another student versus independently. That then frees up the special educators who are on team to do more of their inclusion services that paraeducators are also helping out with right now. Um, so that would be the model that we would be looking towards next year. Any questions on the elementary school before I move on?
Let me just ask quickly.
Yeah.
The reading specialist should be and would be separate from Title I, yeah?
Correct. Yeah, so it, so it wouldn't be a reading specialist. It would be a special education teacher who's just going to be dedicated to that, to that reading service. Yes, good question.
So think of Title I as your tier-two supports, and the reading teacher, the special education reading teacher would be your tier-three supports.
All right. So at the middle school, um, we'll be looking to, um, divide some of our flex center programming. Right now, Ms. Alcott does a really nice job. She's working very hard. She's servicing a large number of students with both social, emotional needs and academic needs, which are difficult to meet at the same time if students need to be out of the general education setting for a significant amount of time. Um, so what we would be looking to do is to split the population that she has next year with one teacher focusing on the social, emotional, behavioral, therapeutic component, and another teacher really focusing on those secret academic, um, services that students need. So if they need an ELA class outside of the general education setting, that they could access a flex program for that. Um, with student needs coming up, we do have a need for a severe special education program at the middle school next year, which we didn't have the need for this year. With the academic center students this year, if you will, not needing that academic center next year, we would be looking for that severe special education teacher to take the severe special education students coming up. That wouldn't be called academic center anymore, though. That would be called flex. Um, so to summarize that, because that was a lot of moving parts, so still, um, a special educator at each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then three separate flex programs at the middle school.
And no academic?
No academic center.
Okay.
So students receiving services from the academic center also are receiving supports within the general education setting. So they would receive their services either from the special education teacher on team when they're in the inclusion setting or from that flex program that's servicing the secret academic component.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on middle school? Okay, thank you. All right. So for high school, um, right now, we have co-teachers in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. No plans to change that model there. Right now, we have two flex programs, not looking for any substantive changes there, with the exception of one of those programs is supposed, going to be focusing primarily on the social, emotional, behavioral piece that they are this year, and the other one will be more significantly modified curriculum, like secret classes next year. The bigger change at the high school is looking to split that Stars and Stripes program so that students, um, in ninth through 12th grade are getting their instruction from a teacher with a severe special education license within one program, but then that the postgraduate students have access to a special education teacher and still have access to more prevo- pre-vocational opportunities, um, more community outings. opportunities, more community outings within their programming, and then reducing our need for the waiver for the age span. This might be something that we have to revisit in the future if the cohort sizes change. Right now, that seems like a sustainable model, just knowing who the students are currently receiving services and who are in the middle school as well.
Is receiving the waiver complicated, expensive?
It's not, it's not complicated, it's not expensive, but it's not meant to be a yearly process, really. You're asking forgiveness in a way, like please excuse the fact that we can't accommodate these age differences this year. A part of that waiver is what are you going to do to remedy this situation so that you don't need to apply for the waiver in the future?
So is it standard in most other districts to have it separated like that, ninth through?
If you have enough of a cohort, it definitely is, and I would say, when you're thinking of postgraduate programs, if you think of it this way, you want to be spending the majority of your time out in the community, right, getting your pre-vocational opportunities there, going to the grocery store, like doing all of those, all of those activities which are why you're still in school.
Yeah.
Which in ninth, 10th, and 11th, and 12th grade, if you're in a severe special education classroom, we still have functional academics that we need to be focusing on within the school setting.
Okay. I just ask because, I mean, I don't know a lot about it, but I get the impression that it's a very beloved program, so I think, yeah, I think there'll be some...
Not that anything's going away, but just having the two separate teachers and two separate areas, not that students can't access components of either classroom, but just having that extra person so that...
Will there be opportunities for those students to still like collaborate with each other, because I think that's like part of the...
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to work on in general. We've been having a lot of conversations about, and I caught myself honestly saying it at one point during this presentation tonight, even though it's a huge pet peeve of mine, I said an academic center student. We've got to work on that. You know, this is a flex student, a Star student, a Stripe student, like they're Douglas students. They go and they access whatever program it is with a focus on the services. So we've talked about, you know, there are students receiving services at the high school right now in a flex classroom who need some transitional services. There's no reason that if we're offering those in a Star's classroom, that that student couldn't access that as well. So not even that students serviced by Stars or Stripes, you know, can be interacting. I think we need to start looking at a little bit more fluidity between programs in general.
Okay.
Any other questions on the high school? Or the split? As far as staffing impacts due to these changes from the DTA standpoint, we're looking at some internal changes for sure. So Ms. Abicki's done an excellent job as our team chair this year. She is going to be returning to a teaching position next year at the high school. She's going to take an existing position at the high school, which then bumps a teacher from the high school. That teacher will move into that third flex program at the middle school, and that will leave us asking to add one additional FTE for a severe special ed teacher at the high school so that we could split the Stars and Stripes program.
And the team chair position open?
Yes.
I'm gonna, right.
Oh, she gets that.
Sorry.
No, no problem. No, that's okay. And then going to, that's a great question, right? So then not even addressing that team chair position?
Next time, I want you to bring like the whiteboard with Xs and Os, and you can...
And this is how I did do it originally the first time. There were spreadsheets involved, and there was a lot of whiteboard writing and arrows everywhere. Right now, I want us to just think about the way that we're structuring our special education department, just from a leadership standpoint. So right now, we have our director of special education, and then we have two other positions that are servicing more of the team chair roles. So we have a special education coordinator. At this point, the model is similar to previous years. She's chairing all meetings from early interventions of the students who are receiving services under three years old, who are turning three, so those kiddos all the way up through fifth grade. And then we have a team chair servicing, serving as the team chair, excuse me, from grade six through post-grad. The difference between their two roles essentially is that the coordinator is an administrator where the team chair is a DTA member. So the additional responsibilities that the special education coordinator have essentially is a lot more supervision and evaluation. What I would like for people to consider as an option for next year would be moving that team chair position into a second special education coordinator position. Right now, when they're acting in the team chair role, they show up to these, to the IEP meetings as what's called the district designee. So every time you run an IEP meeting, there needs to be a district designee. Essentially, that means the person who the special education director has designated their authority to. So that person goes to the IEP meetings with the authority to make any decision about a student's programming. They also are responsible for monitoring compliance, which sounds like it would be an easy job even as a DTA member. You know, it's really hard to enforce compliance regulations, even if you're acting as the designee of an administrator when you're not an administrator. So that's an incredibly challenging position for one DTA member to have to ask another DTA member, I need that by tomorrow, don't forget, and to give some of those directives. The other piece is just increased compliance monitoring would be helpful to have, and with a DTA member in that team chair position, it limits the hours that they're available to work. You know, they have the DTA calendar versus a 12, being a 12-month position, they can't take on any of those supervision and evaluation pieces. So we would, we would be looking, looking to change that.
So, I don't want to get us too off-topic here, but, and I don't know if you know the answers to all of this, but that, the way that it's structured right now is not, in my memory, not the way that we had it structured when we first added the team chair. Like, and I know everything was kind of haywire, because Laura was out for a long time, Neely was like drowning, and the amount of work needed to be done, and then COVID hit. But essentially, the way that it seemed, that I recall it happening was that, like Laura basically was servicing the whole district in that evaluative capacity, and then Sky, who had the team chair position, I feel like she was more focused on the younger grades, but it wasn't split the same way that it was sort of like, well, this is, you know, early intervention to fifth, and then sixth through post-grad. It was, like, the team chair was underneath the, so what happened, or why was that not working? I mean, I know that there, we had to fill positions, but why did that structure change?
Sure, yeah. So when I had the opportunity to work with Laura this summer, we did talk about some of that. So it sounded like, from what she shared with me at that time, that the team chair was chairing meetings kindergarten through fifth grade, and that she was chairing the sixth to 12, and then was overseeing some of that supervision and evaluation piece, was doing a good portion of that, like you said, across, across the district, not just the sixth through 12 area. The big difference between what the team chair and the coordinator are doing this year versus previous years is in previous years, the special education teachers were chairing their own meetings, their own annual meetings, and the team chair and the coordinator were only chairing reevaluation and initials when eligibility was being determined.
And that's not a good thing? We can't continue with that?
So you could continue with that, there's a couple of things with that. So that means every special education teacher shows up to the meeting as the district's designee, making the programmatic financial decisions at the meetings. It's a lot of, it's a lot of responsibility to put on a teacher who also has a full-time teaching load.
Yeah, it's also a lot of time away from students that they're servicing. Yeah.
I think it's also hard to monitor for consistency as well.
It's hard to monitor for consistency, for sure. I think when you, when you have two people chairing meetings, typically what you end up with in the end is you can tell when something's come from the same district or not. When you have seven people in just one building chairing different meetings, you can't even tell that it came from the same building, let alone the same district, just because people are doing, doing things to their training essentially. And it's not possible to keep up with their training and meet with them as regularly as you can for two chair, two team chairs, excuse me. So in our surrounding districts, I don't know of any of our surrounding districts that have teachers chairing their own meetings. Team chairs are typically chairing meetings.
So, again, the new structure, or the going forward or next year, structure proposal would be Director of Student Support Services, and then the, what's the next one?
Two admins, right?
Yeah, two coordinators.
Two coordinators.
Yes.
And they would be split up by grades?
That would make sense to me. If they're both at the same role, then that would make sense to me, yeah. Because then you're supporting buildings.
And no team chairs?
And no team chairs.
Okay.
Because the coordinators would be chairing, chairing meetings.
Thank you. Sorry, I know that's a lot of questions.
No, that's okay, that's okay. And that is different than some of our surrounding districts. The majority of our surrounding districts, just for full transparency sake, have a special education director, and then it's down to team chairs. I don't mean down to team chairs, but then the step below is the team chairs who's chairing all of the meetings, so no administrators below them.
Is there anything that a team chair does that we are missing out on by having it be not a team chair, not a DTA member?
So someone still has to act in the role of a team chair. It's confusing because we're using two different names. So I would look at it as either a DTA member or an administrator. You're not missing out on anything by having it be an administrator versus a DTA member. Someone still has to chair the meetings, though, and I would strongly recommend that we continue with two people chairing, chairing the meetings versus teachers chairing their own.
Okay.
It's also, there's a lot of clerical pieces. I think it sounds a lot easier than it is to schedule your meetings, get the invitations out on time, make sure you have all of your documentation, on top of a full teaching load, it's a lot of work.
No, it doesn't sound easy. If anybody's received that paperwork before, it doesn't, it's not easy. I'm reading through it, I'm like, what does this box say? And then, yeah, no, it's not.
And it's, good point, it's a lot of like checkboxes, right, on top of a teaching load. Even teachers who were hesitant at the beginning of the year, or not even the beginning, I think we were October, November-ish when we started talking about them not having to share their own annuals, some were hesitant, because that's what they were used to doing, it's a part of, you know, what their position was. I can't tell you how many times people have come into Sarah's office and my, oh, thank God, thank you so much for, you know, taking that off so I can spend more time with the kids and I'm not missing so many services. So overall, I see that as a positive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions on that piece? All right, so now we can talk about how we're going to fund these changes. So we're looking at the reallocation of resources for what we have right now. So we're not talking about any staff that are currently employed as a pair or an ABA at this moment having their positions eliminated. We do have vacant positions that we haven't been able to fill for a large portion of this year. Right now, we still have four AB, uh, four para positions and one ABA position across the district. We would be looking to eliminate those positions for the next year, to add the severe special education teacher at the high school, and then to cover a portion of the coordinator position, replacing the team chair position. So I've, oh, go ahead.
So is this, are we sort of absorbing any excess cost, like is it evening out, or?
So is that a part of your budget next, or?
It's not, so either you or Courtney can take that if you...
Sure, absolutely. So it's not going to even out, there's, there's going to be, I would imagine, there's going to be...
It's going to be more expensive.
About $30,000 that will need to be.
Delta.
And in the, if you don't mind my interjecting, and in the budget that I have for you this evening for FY23, the changes that Tara has enumerated have been incorporated in the budget.
Are we expecting that we are going to be able to cover services in IEPs with that shift?
We are, with the addition of the teacher at the high school, with the third flex program at the middle school, and having that reading teacher at the elementary school, we're really reducing the, the need for a paraprofessional supporting the inclusion services, because we're freeing up more of the special educators who are servicing on-team, those co-teaching sections. So really what that's going to look like is, instead of those teachers doing so many pull-out services in addition to the co-teaching, that they'll have increased co-teaching.
Okay.
Questions on any of that?
No. I mean, I can see the value added in terms of stability and strength of special ed programming across the whole district in this. So like when we're talking about spending more money, you know, that's the question, you know, what's the value that we're getting out of this increased cost? And to me, I just see where this can help strengthen and stabilize, you know, on all levels, you know, so. Those are my initial impressions from hearing this.
I think, you know, I just want to add, it's a lot of, it's a lot of change, right? And like, I'm a person who's, like, I'm not good with change, but I would just say that I don't think that it has to be a bad thing, and some of it has to, and some of it's required, some of it's necessary. There is change because there's change in the population, et cetera. I would say that I hope that however, this actually pans out in reality with hires and with restructuring, that like families continue to be communicated to by everybody within the district, so that, like, again, let me bring, go back to Stars and Stripes. If that's something that, you know, we've been doing for a long time, and it's supposed to be this other way, well, you know, communicating in what way this other format fulfills needs, and also saying, okay, but if there's something that you feel that you're, like, I think, I would think that sense of community from that larger span of ages, if there's something that's, that those students are going to miss out on because they're not on this, in the same classroom together, then like what are different ways that we can fulfill that need that that program, so, you know what I'm saying? So that whatever the change is, if there's like a feeling of loss or concern over whether the new thing will be as good or better, just being open to communication and, you know, and working with families so they understand that, because...
Absolutely.
These are all, these are all their babies, even the 22-year-old ones.
Yeah, sure. I think going back to your point of just, just feeling like, change is hard, even if, even when you can see the value added, change can, change can be hard. I think letting parents know what's being added versus, you know, something's really not being taken away by split, by giving Stars and Stripes an additional teacher, which gives increased access to the community, that's not taking away anything, where, you know, it's giving an additional resource. But to your point, like talking about how some of those other pieces are impacted and how that can be remedied, I agree.
And, and I think it's just sort of a, it can be partly an emotional knee-jerk reaction to, like, what, I remember, what, you're going out on maternity leave? Like, no, don't go have a baby, stay, stay with my daughter. So, yeah, I think communication is key.
But I would imagine too, that where you talk about taking things off those special education teachers' plates and putting it to the admin, that also, you know, we're freeing up, so we should be also allowing for more time, more touch points with families on the part of those special education teachers too now, right? That I would expect is something that's going to be added.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think there's, I mean, I think back to when co-teaching first came up to me, I was like, what, like what? And then the more you hear about it, and the more you understand how it works, then it seems pretty great, you know? So I just think you can take a little time, and communication never hurts.
So, my two cents, I need the slides.
I made a note to get you the slides tomorrow.
I don't know how many people want copies of the slides for next, so I just think...
I'll get you the slides in the morning.
It's a lot for us to digest, and not having them here, like I'm taking notes and everything else. Communication is the key. If we've learned nothing else through COVID, if we don't communicate effectively, we get a really bad reaction. So that would be my, if we're going to go forth with the budget that we're presenting and everything else, we need to communicate that to the parents too as well, because we owe that to them, because it's going to be a change, and I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction, we did this in a vacuum, we did not let them know. So that's my biggest concern, so. Who all wants copies from Lauren to print off for next week's meeting, I mean, next month's meeting?
I'll take them.
So can we have five copies?
We can definitely get them tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tara. I know this was a meeting.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much, yep.
All right, next is an update to the superintendent's preliminary proposed... All right, um, next is an update to the superintendent's preliminary proposed budget. Um, on the second slide, a- as we do in school committee meetings and as I did last week, is, is our mission statement and the importance of making sure that we offer that experience both academically, social, physical, emotional needs of all students. We want to do that in a safe, supportive and challenging learning environment so that our kids achieve that academic success and personal growth that they're so deserve. On the next slide, again, just to remind people, our goal is to provide at minimum a level service budget for the FY23 fiscal year. So we want to make sure at minimum we're providing the same level of services this year, uh, next year as we did this year. Onto the next slide is a budget summary as of three sixteen, so I'll go through this, um, and I left the March second numbers up there just for you to see where we were and where we've progressed to. So bring you down to the fourth line where it says FY23 total preliminary proposed budget. On March second, we were at seventeen point nine seven million dollars. As of today, we're at seventeen point eight one million dollars. So we were able to go through, look at outline items and do some additional reductions. Those will be highlighted i- in, in the next slide. Um, we also took a look at our grants and, um, in revolving funds. In March second, we were using two point nine million dollars in grants and revolving funds. Now we're up to three point three million. We've increased some circuit break, use of circuit breaker. We've increased the use of our S R three funds and we've been able to use some revolving funds from our athletics. So our preliminary budget as of now, we were at fifteen million thirty thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars on March second. Now we're at fourteen million five hundred and four thousand six hundred and one. The delta between what our allocation is and where we're at now on March second was eight hundred nineteen thousand, we're at two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars now. So, um, the percent increase over our FY22 appropriation, we were at seven point three five percent. We're now at three point six percent. So we've been able in the past week to go through, do a further line item analysis and look at our grants to be able to lower that number. On the next slide, we'll go over some of the changes since three two. This isn't a complete list, but it just highlights some of the things that we've done in order to try to get to that one point five appropriation from the town. We've reduced the textbook line items approximately forty-nine thousand dollars. We had iPads in the FY23 budget. We removed thirty-one thousand dollars of iPads for the primary school and we actually used a grant we had this year to purchase tho- those iPads. In the budget for next year, we had a middle school guidance counselor slash adjustment counselor for fifty thousand dollars and we had a district-wide custodial grounds person for thirty-seven thousand dollars. Those were taken out of the budget. We've removed building supplies in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and three dollars and we're going to fund that using our S R three grant. We've reduced our elementary school instructional supplies by twenty thousand dollars. Our middle school athletic transportation budget by forty-four hundred dollars. We're going to use our S R three grant to support Title One staff and the funding of staff to a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Courtney went through and looked at our salary master to see, um, with people moving all the time, could we do additional, what changes were there? That came to about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. As I said earlier, we've increased our use of circuit breaker funds about a hundred and fifty thousand and our use of athletic revolving thirty-five thousand dollars. So those are the bulk of the changes and the bulk of the things that we've done from the second of February two now to get us closer to that one point five percent, um, allocation. The next slide is again, just a, as I said last week, we are optimistic that we can close the budget gap with a combination of looking at further line item analysis, possible use of revolving funds, possible increase in the town's allocation beyond the one point five percent and potential increase in grant funding that we could use. Things are changing, things are evolving, things are moving and within the next upcoming months, especially after town meeting in early May, we should be able to have a much clearer picture on the FY23 budget. So just wanted to provide everyone with an update and a lot of work that happened between the second and the sixteenth, especially from Courtney in order to be able to, um, to do this. I want to go back and highlight and just talk a little bit about some of those changes. These are things that we need, but we also have the reality of coming to that one point five percent above our town allocation. So the task that we had was, how can we minim, we don't want to reduce or eliminate staff. We want to make sure we keep our, our staff here, um, because they're doing a great service for our kids. We also want to make sure that we're not removing or reducing or having a significant impact on what's happening with kids. So we tried to find that balance and that blend of looking at the budget, looking at our line items to minimize the impact on, on students. And this is what we came up with. Um, it was a lot of work on Courtney's part, a lot of discussion that we had, but we are at the three point six percent and we still have the additional two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars to get down to the one point five percent allocation from the town. Questions?
So those staff members that you do, that you had originally thought were gonna, we could add, when do you think that we could revisit that? After, like, in the summer?
So what, what we've, we have our public hearing on, I got my dates, I'm sorry.
April sixth.
We, we have our public hearing on April sixth and we have our annual town meeting on May second. Once we know what happens at our annual town meeting, we're going to have to revisit the budget.
Redo the entire budget, pretty much, yeah.
We're going to have to redo everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Certainly, and everything is, is up for, it'll, it'll be all redone. And just keep in mind too that incorporated in here are the changes that, um, Tara enumerated as well, which is, which is good. And again, I want to remind everyone, um, that approximately eighty-five percent of our budget is salaries, so when you're struggling, because we really want, you know, the stability ever since two thousand eighteen, the biggest thing with me and, you know, the override helped with that, but it's still, it's hard to keep pace with the one point five percent is we, we need stability in keeping our staff, keeping our programs, you know, so what's left is such a very small amount for supplies. It really is a very small amount. So, but, you know, I feel very good of both, you know, the work we've done to get to the point that we're at now. And, um, we just take it one step at a time, but to further answer your, um, question as well, Monique, is that in the past, um, you know, and I know most of you have heard me say this a million times, aside from the town meeting aspect of it as well, when we do close the year out, we see exactly what we have for balances in the revolving funds, you know, in grants
Yep.
um, and, and things of that nature, carryover, um, from general fund, et cetera. And so in the past, I know it's not the ideal time
No.
to look for staff, so again, but we won't be because we are maintaining our staff. There certainly is the ideal time that if we can incorporate, if we can come to the school committee and say, we would like to use more of school choice or whatever, then we could certainly do the purchase order once approved, um, during the summertime and have it available for our students when they return in September. Well, can't, I don't have control over delivery issues and in a normal world. So we will be doing that as well. And we close the books as fast as we can here, both my office and Jean's, we work very closely together to try to do as quickly as we can.
So it's, there's still a realm of possibility for school year twenty-two, twenty-three for?
There's still a realm of possibility, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. One, one day at a time, like a lot of, like all of us do these days, one day at a time. And, and we will get there.
One, one thing, for instance, we, for athletics, and I don't, I, I want to be optimistic, but one thing we do for all of our athletic teams, we budget for two postseason games. That's for transportation and officials. We don't know what's going to happen with our baseball and softball team in the postseason. We've budgeted for those games. Now, if they don't make the postseason, that's additional funds that are left in the budget that we can then reallocate. Now, if we're being optimistic, which is great, they go deep into the playoffs and then we might have to dip into our accounts because we have to fund more than two postseason games. But tha- that, that's what happens between now and the, the end of the year.
Lot of ebbs and flows. I mean, even when you think about it, even the weather, you know, how much oil you have to purchase over the winter time. You know, we even had snow in March, so, and that's very close to the end of the year, so we just wait until the end of the year. We have a really, we have exact rate-to-the-penny balances reconciled and we take a look then. And I bring all of that to the school committee, um, all of the balances, do a report on everything and then, um, between myself and the superintendent and then with all of you on the school committee, we'll make some decisions from there.
So the DPS iPads are purchased with the grant?
Correct.
Yes.
So it was in the, it was in the FY23 budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
We took it out of the budget to lo, so this is, this is where the, what we've had to do the past couple of these. We had to take the thirty-one thousand dollars out of the FY23 budget to lower that line for FY23 total preliminary budget from seven point nine million to seventeen point eight million. And then what we used, because we knew the kids needed them at the primary school, we used the grant money
Yeah.
from this year that has to be spent by June thirtieth
Yeah.
in order to purchase the iPads.
Okay. The Title One staff, that's for their salary for the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year?
That is for the FY23 for next school year, at this point, correct?
At this point.
At this point, that's correct.
Okay. And then also the building supplies, those are like the iPads, they're, we're using the S R three grant.
Yep, that's, that's, um, filters for the HVAC system.
Okay, they are actually purchased. It's just.
No, 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 we're just going to pay for them out of the S R three grant next year.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't like to couch quarterback for budget because I know that it is way more complicated than eight pages of paper. Are we concerned about Title One staff having, I mean, you know, I never like to see stuff not be able to be purchased for, for our students. All of us feel that way. Are we concerned that the, um, Title One staff salaries are coming out of the S R three grant and the, the use of circuit breaker, like the, if I look at the last, like,
Yep.
the three to four, the three out of the four last ones there, those are the ones that make me like
Yep.
flinch a little bit about
Yep.
the longevity.
As they did, as, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as we, we have done in the past, I mean, we have done staff, it's not really ideal, to be honest with you, because by law, any federal grant, you have to also pay nine percent
Okay.
of retirement, so I never like to do that. But again, you, you can see how difficult this has been, um, to do. And you have to look at what each grant allows you to utilize the funds for and that was really basically, that was a fit of exactly, you know, the, one of the areas that they, they're speaking to. But again, I do, can't reemphasize it enough that this could all completely change after the town meeting. Okay, so that's just at this point, but I do, but I definitely want to answer your questions and, and have you at least feel comfortable for this evening at least. But as far as I did, um, provide to you a sheet, um, to answer your other question, um, the school choice and the circuit breaker, um, I did update it, so yes, I did incorporate another at page two is the circuit breaker one. The trend analysis, the two pages.
Two pages. Oh, there it is.
Yeah. So the second one is on circuit breaker and yes, I did, um, increase the use of circuit breaker another hundred and fifty thousand. And if you look at the very bottom fund balance after contingency, we're still looking to be about the same as where we project to be this year and even a little bit more as you can see than the last three years prior to that.
Yep.
So it's coming, and again, these aren't easy decisions. I, it's just, it, you know, you agonize over.
Yeah.
You know, and look at it, and look at it, review and review and do trend documents and analyze things and, um, and, and you know, if I can't go home and sleep at night, I'm not going to recommend it to you that we do it. Now, is, I did not, and usually it would be the school choice that I would do that with, but no, I did not feel comfortable increasing the school choice anymore. But again, as the year goes on and we get past a town meeting and see where we are with town meeting, I'll be doing, and I know, we're not at the end of the year, but we're still closer, almost two months closer to the end. I'll be doing another analysis of school choice and the general fund to again, maybe make some recommendations about use of those two, two accounts here. Also the preschool revolving and probably athletic, I won't be making any, um, changes, but I'll be looking at all of them. And basically we'll be doing the entire budget over again, to be honest with you. I mean, that's just the reality.
Very.
So, are there any other questions? And as far as, um, was there another line that you asked about too, Becky?
No, I don't think so.
You sure? Okay.
If I did, I'll let it go.
See if there's anything, um, to do, to do. Yep, and then the two new, new positions we took out.
Oh, I did have a question about that. So do we have a middle school guidance adjustment counselor?
No, it was a proposed addition for next year. There's two positions.
Oh, we ha, we have.
We, we, sorry.
We have one.
We have an adj, we have an adjustment counselor now.
We have one.
We have one. I was looking to add.
Yes.
Um, one thing that we've seen, sorry, one thing that we've seen at, at the, at the middle school is, um, the thought process in adding the guidance counselor slash adjustment counselor was this. One, I want to be able to start that academic planning for grade six students to start build that academic plan from grade six to grade, grade twelve. Guidance counselor could help support that, using Naviance and just having kids build, see what opportunities are here
Right.
in the district. The second thing is, right now, our adjustment counselor is seeing everything from my boyfriend's mad at me to, I saw on Snapchat, my kids went to a party, to some severe issues. She's overwhelmed with the caseload. The guidance counselor slash adjustment counselor, this new position would have allowed for that tier one intervention of kids coming down and would allow for our current adjustment counselor, Kayla, to be able to work with our tier two and our tier three supports for our at-risk kids. There's a lot of stuff going on in, in the middle school, so that position was kind, was going to serve those, those two roles. Was to meet the, the social, emotional needs that we've seen a tremendous spike in the middle school, but also start that six through twelve career planning and academic planning, um, to keep kids in district.
Right. Okay.
Now, it doesn't mean that, again, when we, we do go to revisit the budget, these are not, we haven't, we're not, I haven't forgotten about any of these things, so they're all delineated.
It's not binding.
And what will, you know, in, in talking about next steps, we do have our public hearing set for April, April sixth, then we do have our town meeting on May second. We've talked about it in budget subcommittee, um, Ms. Keegan and I talked about, we're probably going to do, have to do another public hearing middle of May when we redo the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, because depending on what happens at town meeting, we want to revisit some of these, the, these cuts and we want to do it in an open, transparent process.
Or the, or, or maybe better.
Or, or, or maybe additions.
Yeah.
I should have thought optimistically.
But again, just to be, you know, fully, because it would be a, a, a number, it'd be one thing if we just had a few changes. But where it may be a lot of changes, I think it's just right to, you know, have full, start all, you know, with the school committee and then, well, budget subcommittee, school committee and then do another publication. For anybody that's interested in seeing where we actually land before we start in FY23.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very welcome.
All right. And finally, the last piece. I presented a few, I think about six to eight weeks ago, on my goals and my evaluation. And, uh, at this point, I'm bringing to you my end of the year, although we're only in March, because I know my, the school committee is going to present me with my evaluation at our, our next meeting, so just want to present some of my goals, some of my evidence publicly to the committee and to the community. We're going to do this like I did the last time in two parts. The first is I have four SMART goals. In front of you, you have all the evidence. I'm not going to go through the hundred bullet points of, of evidence there. You have that in front of you, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. So the first SMART goal was the implementation of the blueprint. We've talked about that dozens of times, um, in, in the past year. The blueprint has five areas, the first one being academic excellence, the second one being, uh, community partnerships, third, the well-being of all, fourth, local and global citizenship, and fifth, growth mindset. Under academic excellence, just highlighting a couple of things that, that we've done. You know, looking forward to high school for the FY22, 23 school year, is going to be adding that AP physics two class, is going to be adding AP seminar, adding in honors topics in math and graphic design. High school's also been working in department meetings to look at curriculum, update their curriculum and align their curriculum to make sure that needs are being met. PTO at the primary school and at the elementary school, sponsored a read-a-thon in March. Again, just getting kids to read more is, is, is a great thing. You saw the presentation a couple of weeks ago and we did some more work on, on the STARS assessment, looking at that data and using that data to drive instruction. Under community partnerships, I presented last week on our Massachusetts Family and School Partnership Initiative. The elementary school and our primary school did a family math night in, in March. Primary and elementary school is also doing a reading literacy night in April. So again, ju- just some things to, um, So again, ju- just some things to, um, focus on the academic excellence. The well-being of all has been so important. We have a middle school, we have an elementary school enrichment program, our middle school enrichment program just is starting to take off. We have eight courses that teachers have signed up to do, so we're gonna be able to offer that after-school enrichment program to our middle school kids. DA's office presented back in October on school safety. Uh, high school and middle school both do student of the month things, recognition events for families and for students. Our primary school does a social thinking curriculum with Tracy Purvis. And last month at the middle school, we had a suicide prevention expert come in and talk to staff. Under local and global citizenship, we partnered with KW of diversity as a leadership team to look at how we can support diversity in school, promote equity and inclusivity for all. We heard a little bit about what our first, fifth graders did in terms of that local and global citizenship. We have the step-up day, whi- which is awesome. We've done a lot of stuff with food pantries, a lot of our senior projects focusing on that school service piece. And finally, under growth mindset, if you remember back at the beginning of the era, elementary school did some goal setting. We had Jesse Green, the machine, come in and present to elementary and middle school kids about the importance of work ethic and resiliency. So we had a lot of things we did to highlight the blueprint. The second standard is under instructional leadership, and it really was prioritizing those classroom observations and having principals and district leaders get into class and look for the, those three things. Student engagement, fostering a safe learning environment, and purposeful instruction. As I said, we watched videos on it, we, um, calibrated, we've done learning walks together with, with principals. So we really want principals in there providing feedback to staff. The third goal is environment, and that's around the well-being of all, I highlighted that earlier. And then the last goal was under family and community engagement, talked a little bit about that in the blueprint, and again, I presented last week on it about the family engagement, um, working on finalizing a survey to send out to families, just to get some feedback from them as to how they want to engage with us, so we can begin to write a mission statement. So that's the goal part of it. The next piece is the rubric that's used to evaluate all administrators. There are four standards, and what we decided at the beginning of the year was under each standard to also include an indicator. So under standard one, instructional leadership, the indicator is instructional leadership. Under management and operations, it's environment. Under family and community engagement, um, it's shared responsibility indicator. And under standard four, professional culture, managing conflict indicator. I shared with you, um, my Google Drive in all the folders, we have about fifteen to twenty pieces of evidence for each of these standards. I didn't want to flood you with too much, I figured fifteen to twenty for each standard should be enough. I just wanna spend a few minutes here highlighting three or four things in each of the standards. So under instructional leadership, the instructional indicator talks about student engagement, quality and effort of work, and meeting the diverse needs of kids. Some great things we've done, like I said, the blueprint has a heavy focus on that. We talked about our learning walks and being visible inside classrooms and focusing in on those three areas. We partnered with a literacy specialist to work with our pre-AKDA grade five teachers, really focused in on interactive read aloud and small group instruction. And I mentioned last week a partnership that we've joined in with Nichols College. Under management and operations, it's environment. And that speaks to plans, procedures, routines, operation systems, social and emotional well-being, student health and safety. Find it interesting, they lumped, um, social emotional well-being with how you run your lunches and your cafeteria and your bells, but they did. Under evidence, you know, principals have been able, we, we give principals the autonomy to run their buildings and put those plans and procedures in place. We saw it in COVID, we've adapted, we've tweaked, we've adjusted, we've pivoted, we've gone from hybrid to half-days to full-days to masking to no masking, and, and they've done that, um, phenomenally. We have regularly scheduled safety meetings with members of the admin team, facilities director, police, fire, and building inspector. As a result of those meetings, we've had some Alice drills, our fire department came in and did professional development for staff. We've updated our safety protocols, we've, we found an online platform where we can host a lot of our safety protocols. We have staff members wearing ID badges. We did the recharge weekends to work with staff and with students on their, um, mental health, be able to recharge over the weekends. And last month, I'm sorry, this month, I met for the first time with a group of middle school kids and high school kids for about forty-five minutes, just to get their feedback on how things are going, and, uh, they were brutally honest, it was awesome. It was awesome, uh, I'm gonna do it once a month, Josh and Bob are setting it up for me, just to meet with kids once a month, two from each grade. And, um, once, I, I led with, if you were Mr. Romano for a week, what would you do differently? And they just started talking. Did the same thing at the middle school, they just started talking. So they offered some great insight for us that I met with the principals, just to say, hey, you know, here's what the kids' perspective on what's happening, and I'll say this, they were spot on with everything. They didn't miss a beat, it was awesome. Under family and community engagement, the sharing responsibility indicator, student support and family supports. And again, this is getting redundant because we've already talked a lot about it. The blueprint addresses a lot of that, our school improvement plans at the beginning of the year addressed a lot of it. And the piece with the family, um, and school partnership initiative addressed it. And then finally, under professional culture, we did the managing conflict indicator, response to disagreement, conflict resolution, and consensus building. We meet as a leadership team twice a month, where that's an opportunity for principals to bring up issues to me, and we brainstorm and, and work collaboratively on it. Principals, once a week, send me a report highlighting any things they want to bring to my attention. Principals meet on a regular basis with building reps to talk about issues. I meet once a month formally with the DTA and informally, probably two to three times a month, to address issues. And as issues come up, we address them. Are we perfect? No. Do we always make everyone happy? No, can we always say yes? I wish we could, but, but, but we can't. But as issues come up, we, we address them to, to the best of our ability. I know that was quick, it's also late, you have a copy of all the evidence. If you need clarification on it, if it doesn't make sense, please let me know. What I did next to the evidence, I tried to put in parentheses which part of the indicators they correspond to. Some of the stuff I did in September, and it was fresh in my head, and I wrote it, and it made sense to me. If, when I looked at it before I handed it in, it still made sense to me, it may not make sense to you, if it doesn't, let me know. If you need further clarification, or if you need additional evidence, I have it, I just tried to keep it to about fifteen pieces per, um, per standard.
I, first, I just wanna say this is really great to see, it looks like there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of people working very hard. So that is very encouraging to me, um, you know, as a school committee member, but as a parent with kids in the district too, so, um, kudos on that.
And, and just to piggyback off that, this was a team effort, this isn't just me, Courtney participated, Tara, the principals, assistant principals, deans, facilities, police helped out with this, fire helped out with this, um, you know, our, um, building inspector helped out with meeting some of these goals and, and doing some of these things. And we started wearing, uh, go to ID badges, 'cause it's fresh in my head, we went to ID badges, and one of the issues that we had was everyone takes their ID picture back in September. Well, if you didn't take your picture or you were absent that day, or you didn't like the way your picture came out, we didn't wanna have to go all year without wearing IDs. So the fi- the fire department was there, and the assistant chief said, hey, we just purchased an ID maker, it was relatively short money, it works awesome, we'll send you the specs. They sent us the specs, Courtney ordered it, John set it up, and then we were able to make IDs for staff. So this wasn't just me, fire department pitched in on that initiative, Courtney pitched in, John pitched in, so.
Philomena did the.
Scott did it, Scott loved doing the pitches.
Yeah. In the ID thing.
So it was, it was really, it's, this is a team effort.
Yeah, that's great. My only question, so I love the blueprint, and I've loved it since, like, you know, it was first introduced last, the, when we were first, um, talking about this. I don't think, I mean, that was pre-school committee for me, but, um, just in reading the SMART goal number one and how it translates to the goals, I was just, uh, just following that was just a little bit challenging. So I'm wondering, you know, if there's a way that we can integrate the goals, the blueprint, into the goals where, you know, standard one is instructional leadership, and then we see the blueprint items. And what of those blueprint items pertains to the instructional leadership, and then go to the next one. I think it was just in terms of, sometimes standard two reads instructional leadership instead of management and operations.
So, I wanted to include, we spent a lot of time last year on the blueprint. We formed committees, we worked, we worked on it. We spent a lot of time as a leadership team this year, and I felt it important to include it as one of my goals. It may not align perfectly with everything that's in the evalu- the, the rubric.
Yep.
But I felt it important to include it in there because it was a big part of the work that we did, and it is the direction that, that we're moving in. There are several parts of that that do fit into the professional practice goals, the student learning goals, and the district improvement goals. And you can take many parts of that blueprint, and it does fit into the professional practice goal, the student learning goal, and the district improvement goals.
Yep, yeah, I see that too.
How I took it was just like, we can look at the blueprint and the examples of things that happened under the blueprint to be like, okay, well, you know, what in there reinforces the professional culture, or that sort of thing. And the, and the fact that it is literally addressed as a goal in the blueprint, but it, I don't think it has to be like, um, I don't know. Like, I don't think we all have to take it exactly the same way, like, if there's something in here that you feel like, oh, he's fostering professional culture, which is one of these, in this part of the blueprint, and by promoting that, and like, here's some of the examples, then I think that that adds to this thing.
Yeah, I see the, I can see it, and, and like, I don't wanna take away from the blueprint, I think it's fabulous, I think it, um, it, you know, I, I love how it's organized. I think in just what we've learned about the evaluation process, how can we fit it together so that it's easy to read? It's clear to anybody who reads it that, you know, you know, here, this is what we've done, so that there's, you know, no question when somebody is like, okay, what have we done regarding instructional leadership? Boom, it's, it's there, you know, these are the pieces, I guess that's just, how can we fit it together more like puzzle pieces, I guess, is my, and, and it's not something we're gonna, that's gonna, needs, it needs an answer or even a response. It's just.
Yeah, the tough.
Boom.
Yeah, the tough thing with instructional leadership is, it's what we do every day, so it's so hard to list it. You know, I, I had conversations with principals today, a- a- and with Tara, about instructional leadership. And it came in so many different forms. Some of it probably could have fit into the blueprint, but again, to give that evidence of, you know, I walked into a class and I had a discussion with a teacher about, or so-and-so asked me for a resource on, or I forwarded an article to someone about, um. Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, it's not something that's gonna, that we need to figure out now, but just, 'cause I want anybody who reads this, because I imagine that this is available to public, this is available to parents, that.
Correct.
You know, it's clear that, yeah, we are meeting, as, you know, compared to state standards, yeah, this is, this is how well we're doing, you know, so. If that makes sense.
It does, I just think that there's also, I don't know, I think I'm approaching it differently. Like, there's a, to me, this is actually like two documents that stapled together, right?
Yeah.
Like, there's the blueprint, which is stapled together, and then there's the separate part of the evaluation pieces. And some of them, and so like, you could use this, the blueprint part, half, as like, what do I, Becky, see in here as evidence towards how I'm going to rank this stuff? But I also don't think it has to be like, we're not all gonna see it exactly the same way, and that's okay. Like, you don't have to, like, you don't have to prove to the whole, like, don't be a jerk about it, don't be like unsatisfactory for something where there's clearly like a ton of things, you know, it should be reasonable, but it's okay, I think that we come at it from different perspectives. And that we're, like, we are all looking at the same body of evidence, and like, we've been to the meetings and all of that stuff. But, that, I mean, that's part of what the comments are for too, so if, if we say, like, let's say, for example, the, um, the information, the weekly updates that we get that has little snapshots from the principals.
Yep.
Like, that was new to you, like, Mr. Mainz didn't do that before you. To me, that's a very, personally, that's a very tangible added thing in terms of, um, like, organization, communication, and then where do I see that? I see that in professional culture, in management and operations, but maybe Lisa thinks of it more as, as the professional culture piece, and that's where she's having it influence her thing. But, like, I wouldn't worry about having to prove it because it's okay for you to feel like this is important for instructional.
It's not proving, it's organ- just the organization, so that it's easier to kinda see. Like, like, maybe the blueprint is the narrative of what everything that's been done, and maybe when, in looking at the standards, like he is doing, he's pulling down all the pieces that relate to those standards, right? But instead of like the blueprint being standard one, what if that's just like the narrative that starts the standards? Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
It's, if, if you go back to, I forget what page it's, but where I said standard one instructional leadership.
Yep.
If you just, so the, I'll read what proficient says. In order to be proficient, it says, monitors and supports principals and instructional staff through observations and feedback to ensure that instructional practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort in work, engage all students, and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness. So you read that one, and you think a lot about instruction, but you can also think about policy and procedure. If, if kid, we've implemented a breakfast program, and we're now serving breakfast to kids. When kids are fed, it's easier for them to learn. That's a structure that principals create, that I may not necessarily put under instructional leadership, but I might have buried in number two, which is, or three, environment plans, procedures, and, and routines. You also talk about creating a safe, you know, SCL. If kids aren't in a good headspace, it's tough for them to learn, so it doesn't matter what instructional practices you have. So you might be looking at some things that I have in standard two that helps support standard one.
So, so let's just say, so if I'm going through and I'm evaluating this, and I need to put a score in, so it says standard, standard two, management and operations. So I go to, um, or maybe I'm getting confused with SMART goal two, standard one, okay.
So that is, that is number one. It's number two, it's his SMART goal, like, it should have been two documents, 'cause I had to call Paul to discuss. So if you go to tab, I'm sorry to steal your thunder a little bit, but if you go to the end of the cycle, summative, uh, evaluation report for the superintendent that I did, it's got the goals, I just forgot the professional culture in there, is the SMART goal number four. If you go with that, you'll be able to tie it back through.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's my concern, is just making sure that I can accurately score this, um, by following this.
You're gonna follow his blueprint, his blueprint, and then is your backup documentation is what he has, is in an instructional leadership where he gives more of what he has done, the evidence is in there too as well.
Okay.
And there's more in the Google Doc that you have?
Correct, it, it's the front part will be your evidence that you'll be able to rate him on, but he has particularly in the, each one of the SMART goals that we're measuring him on.
Mm-hmm.
He has the details, but you also have to pull it from the blueprint too as well.
Okay, so where it says SMART goal one, it's a standard one.
This should have been blueprint, so.
Okay.
That's, it's not that, that's not SMART goal one.
So this is not standard one, it's blueprint, is that what we're saying?
I would say, I would say it would be a blueprint for, for it, because it's all encompassing all the stuff that we want him to look.
That's to- I totally get that.
So.
I, my, I just wanna make sure that I'm looking in all the places I need to look to be able to, to rate this, so that I'm not missing something.
And so, on page number three, I forgot to add professional culture to it, so I will update that and then send that out to the, all the school committee members via email, um, for you guys to be able to rate. I asked that you could possibly next Fri- next Friday, get all of this back, so I can put this together, 'cause I have to present this at the next school committee meeting, um, if we have. If we have any, um, uh, because I'm basically gonna take basically one, if it's, if it's not proficient, you know, like one through five based on what the check marks are and take an average of everybody's information and put it together. If I need clarification, I will contact you independently to have that clarification with you and then I will present the report at the next school committee meeting. If you have any questions about where we came up with the standards, I went and I pulled all my trusty notes. We made the determination on October 6th on what standards we were gonna use, so that's all there in your packet if you need that. If you need any, have any questions on that, please don't hesitate to reach out and talk to me. That's all I have. Anything else, Dr. Vera?
That is it for my report for tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to the school committee subcommittee reports, do we have a hundred counts payable report?
I didn't see one in there.
I don't see one. I'm just making sure we didn't miss one. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the March 2nd meeting minutes for us to review.
Okay, so I must have offended Lauren because my first, my first name is not on the first page at the top, which is fine. I could just be churniac. And then, and then on the last page where we did roll call vote, I was there and I said my name too, but I'm not on the list. So if Lauren doesn't mind adding me to those two slots, otherwise, then it was fine.
So if Lauren can make those updates, is anyone opposed to going forth with the, um, amended, addendments that Becky mentioned? Is there anything else? Be looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes as amended for March 2nd, 2022.
Motion made by Lisa, second by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the school choice participation vote for the 2022, 2023 school year.
So we're, we're at the point of the year where the school committee has to approve school choice in order for us to be able to accept students for next year. So I'm gonna walk everyone through this document and numbers. So currently we have 122 students who are enrolled in Douglas through the school choice program. In front of you, you can see the numbers ranging as low as four to as high as 20 in, in some grade levels. We met with the principals and we asked them for how many slots could they take in new school choice students? And that's what we have available for FY, for the 22, 23 school year. So you see that as low as two in kindergarten, in grade three, we're high, so no students in the middle school with the exception of grade six, we're at 10. And then again, sadly, because of enrollment, we can accommodate up to 40, although we'll never get 40 in each of the grade levels at the high school. So if every single student in school choice, if we have available slots, we'd be able to add 219 students to our list. The next piece we wanted to look at was just so the school committee could take and see an impact on class size. So you have current class sizes in 21, 22, and then you have projected class sizes in 22 and 23. Just for the sake of comparison, in the past five years, we've been as low as 110 students for school choice and as high as 129. So although the number looks shockingly high, 219, we haven't got over 229 in the past five years. We're 222 this year. So if we get another seven, eight, nine, 10 kids, that would be fantastic. I don't think we're going to see 200 kids, 200 additional students apply, but that's why we're here to have the discussion. So if you look at the projected class sizes for 22, 23, just to go through this, in kindergarten, we have an average class size of about 15 and we've opened it up to two students. In grade one, we have an average class size of 20 and we've had opened that up for six additional school choice kids with four sections that would increase class size from 20 to 21. In grade three, in grade two, we have class, average class size of 18, we're looking at adding 10 students, so an additional three kids per classroom, which would bring it up to 21. We're not doing grade three. In grade four, we have an average class size of 22, five students would bring that up to 23. In grade five, we have an average class size of 20, we're looking at adding 11 students. Again, that's three kids, that would bring it up to 23. In grade six, 22 students, we're looking at adding five, which would bring the class size up to 23. In grade seven, average class size of 19, looking at adding 10 students, which would add two and a half, which would bring us up to 21. In grade eight, average class size of 19, adding 10 kids would add two additional, which would bring us up to 21. The high school gets really complicated when you come to average class size. You have your, you know, your freshman English class, which may have an average class size of 18, but then you have your AP environmental, which might have an average class size of four. So even within one department with electives in classes, it fluctuates tremendously for it. So we, we, we are low. And that's the information on, on, on school choice. This will allow us to get started with the process a little bit earlier and be able to get those applications in and again, helps us know what we have for incoming students for school choice for next year.
So I asked for this extra information and I'll cut to the chase. My eldest is in grade five, which currently has 106 students. Says the average classroom is 26. There are 28 children in her classroom. I counted her picture, her school photo today.
Okay.
She has been at that range since kindergarten, 27, 28, et cetera, kids. I don't understand how we go from an average of 26 kids in a classroom, so let's say that the other three fifth grade classrooms are that size, to next year, if there's no additional children, and we're still saying there's four sections, how does the average go down? Is my first question. And then my second thought on any of this is that COVID has really messed up everybody a lot. And I know that school choice in is important for our finances, it's great for a lot of families in the area who this is a better fit for. Those kids are our kids' friends, like, you know, they're part of this community. But I am, in the past, I've been like, yep, let's do it. This year, I have a huge hesitation to just say, yep, let's do it, anything here because I want us to be 100% on the numbers and I want us to think about what's that instruction look like and can a teacher who has 28, let's say, three of them are out for service, 25 students in front of them, can he or she meet all of their academic and emotional needs given how heightened they are after all the hybrid learning and everything else that everybody's been through? So I have hesitations about this.
So to answer your first question, in grade six, kids are also taking that fifth class, which is an elective.
Okay.
So this is the four classes for what core instruction would look like in English, math, science, and social studies. The other 26, 22, the other 22, 23 kids in the period would be in an elective.
So we're saying that it's five sections in essence, not four.
And what Bob did is he just did, he did the core classes, ELA, math, science, and social studies, and in grade eight, they have ELA, math, science, social studies, and they have the fifth class, which is foreign, which is Spanish. So he didn't include electives in the calculations.
Okay.
Gym class is typically a higher.
So you're telling me that like the core classes, the average classroom size with five additional children will be 22?
No, when I was, so right now, in grade, for next year.
Yep.
They're projecting the average class size to be 22. And again, that could fluctuate because you might have one class with 24, another one with 19 for a variety of reasons. If we added five students.
Yep.
In grade six and you added one student per grade.
Yep.
Per section.
Yep.
You'd go from 22 to 23. In a perfect world, assuming everything works out.
Assuming no one moves into the district.
Assuming no one moves into the district.
Yep.
Assuming, um, you could, if people could move out, assuming everything's perfect.
You know, I have a question about that too. When you talk about, you know, wanting to add an adjustment counselor.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is it better for us to not further burden, you know, is it, you're saying that the current adjustment counselor is overwhelmed? So should we be thinking about that when we talk about school choice at the middle school?
We can be. And again, we, we can, we haven't seen, we've been right there with that 110 to 129 number for the five years. We are 122 students now. So assuming everyone who's doing school choice will continue doing school choice. We've seen the numbers go up. I mean, Lisa, you've been here forever, Courtney, you see it go up.
Thanks.
Four, five, six kids here, there. We've never, we've never seen this numbers. What I asked the principals to share was if we were gonna cap it high, what would the number be? And this is what they gave us. We can go down from there. Again, I would be shocked if we stayed with the 122 students and we had 219 additional students apply.
When does school choice have to be closed by? Like, I know we have to approve it, but when do we have to make a decision about when we're gonna stop?
So what we did, what we did this year, so school choice can stay open forever.
Okay.
What we did this year, for a variety of reasons, is I think we capped it in K through eight, October 1, and nine through 12 in November 1. So principals came in at the start of school year, they presented their, their numbers of average class sizes.
Yeah.
We looked at it, so we kept K to eight, and I might be off, it might have been K to five, but we kept our elementaries open through September and then our middle and high school open through, um, the end of October and then we closed school choice. That's the decision we made this year. In other years, you might have kept it open throughout the entire school year.
Do we see a lot of change between the start of the school year and October, November when we close it? Is there a lot of fluctuation that happens there or is it mostly decided by then?
There isn't a lot, um, there isn't a lot that happens.
Yeah.
If you're having school choice kids come in March, there's usually a reason why they're leaving District A to come to District B in March. So it is nice to close it in September, October, but I can't, I don't recall if we had tremendous influx of kids in September, October. We might have had a couple.
Mm-hmm. So here are my thoughts, if, if I may. Without having the adjusted counselor, it's removed from the budget. I think that we should hold on the middle school increasing those numbers.
Yep.
Until, I mean, just because you need that.
Yeah.
I think.
It gives us room for, for improving this, this current situation.
Middle school right now, I mean, I know all the schools are suffering, but the social emotional needs of our kids, I think we have to put first. And where we're at right now, I don't want it to be a tipping point. And just to echo Becky's sentiments, we've heard it, we, we see it. I have a middle schooler there too.
I will have one next year.
So I, I think, you know, when, when is the rock dead date where we need to approve something or do we approve it but hold for the middle school?
So we, we could, we could do it, this will be by suggestion, we can approve school, the committee can approve school choice and we can start receiving applications. In two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, we can come back and revisit what the numbers are in each of the grade levels and then what would happen would be, um, I'll pick a grade. Let's say in grade four, there's currently five additional students. If, if you approved five and three additional students applied, we would be there. If we approved eight, then it would go to a lottery and you would pull randomly five of the eight students. If eight people, if eight students applied and we capped it at five, it would be a lottery for the five slots. So we can wait, we can approve school choice, we can start receiving the applications.
But you don't have to submit approval to anybody at this point.
We don't have to submit approval to anyone.
And then we can make decisions. I mean, I think, my, my two cents is that.
We can push it out.
I think opening the, you know, the high school.
Definitely.
Like, I, I think the high school's fine because we want, I mean, we see the drop off, like you can look at all the papers, we see the drop off. I think the high school is fine. I just, I mean, like, I look at, again, if it's five students and I, again, like, yes, we don't know what's gonna happen, some people can leave, but if things stayed the way they were and five students came in for sixth grade, 10 for seventh, 10th for eighth, that's 25 additional middle school bodies in that one building, like, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot. And, and back to my point that like, that fifth grade that will become a sixth grade class is very large. The seventh grade class is very large too, like for our, um, sorry. So we're looking at next year's middle school class is gonna be these classes of 106, 92, 92. Like those are, I know that's not big, but like, those are some of our bigger classes, you know? So, yeah, it makes me, and even, even the kindergartners at 101 moving, like, that's, sorry, not the kindergartners, the second graders, that's a lot of bodies in the building. You know, so opening up first grade makes some sense to me because that's so small, 70, I flip side, my other kid's in that grade in the 70 class, she's got a tiny, we've got like one school picture that's like a, a mob and one where it's like they're all floating heads up away from each other. So I get that, but I, I think opening the high school now makes sense and then maybe doing what you're saying, like allowing school choice to be open, but we revisit the numbers.
So you can, so the vote is to allow for school, allow for school choice, so that will allow people to apply for school choice. We don't have to accept anyone, we can come back, we have one meeting in, we have one meeting in April and then we have two in May. We can revisit this at the early May, um, school committee meeting, where we could actually set a number.
So school committee approves accepting, we vote on accepting people?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we accept, we also are already, we are confirming, reconfirming all of the existing school choice students.
Correct. So by accepting school choice and approving these existing 122 would be allowed to continue. Correct.
Which isn't a bad thing. Like they're already, they're already in the count, they're already part of the district.
They're already grandfathered in the.
Right.
They're grandfathered, I'm sorry, once they're here, they're here.
Yes.
122, once they're here, they're here, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
I, I just want to say something because we could talk about this subject for a long time, but, um, because I know that BBT is a phenomenal school, um, and I'm not knocking Douglas, but you see the drop off and so when, we want to encourage people to come to Douglas. You have a tough housing market right now. You have people that are choosing to go to private schools, people wanting to get out of the public schools, and I just feel like, um, encouraging people to wanna be in Douglas, like our grade enrollment of 80, 70, that's a very low number compared to what it used to be. And I just feel like if we get more people to wanna try out Douglas and be committed to Douglas, they're probably less likely, I'm guessing, I'm not saying this statistically, they may not want to go to BBT versus the people that are actually in Douglas, they want out of Douglas, they want to go to BBT versus maybe some of the kids at school choice in. This may be where they wanna stay. Not saying that factually, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm thinking that could be a possibility and I'd rather encourage people to come here because this is all we have. We, we don't have like, um, these people, we get more money by them coming in here versus the kids that are here. That's the other part they have to look at too. So I kind of disagree with what's being said. I think if we had really high grade enrollments and we had the tough teacher situation that we had years ago with class sizes where you had 30 people and there was nothing we could do, but 16 is like, that's a really reasonable size.
And 28 is not.
Yeah. 28's a little challenging when they're younger.
At a school that we're dealing with, social, emotional, and also, you know, we, our nursing supports, you know, not, not to mention, so.
Right. So I'm just, I'm just offering the other view because that's, I feel a little bit differently, but I mean, I recognize all those as issues too, but I just, I'd rather encourage people to come to Douglas because I know all the people that have come here, the ones that are like coming in from outside the towns, they're very committed to coming here. They drive their kids every single day for like 15, 20, 30 minutes. It's amazing.
But I'd also want to be able to take care of them well if they do come to our town too.
And by accepting school choice, we could still accept all the applications we want and then in May, make a decision on the numbers per grade level. And then at that point, again, we, we haven't seen a scenario, we've seen that massive spike, so unless there's some huge blip, we're not gonna get more applicants than we. huge blip, we're not going to get more applicants than we made slots available, but if that is the case, then you just go to a lottery.
And I'm sorry, the other school too is Norfolk Abbey, that we really have to look at those numbers. That's number 10, 10 this year, 10 last year, 7, 6, that's way more.
It's grown too.
It's growing.
It is way more expensive than BBT, and that impacts our budget, and we, that's another thing that we strongly have to consider when we're thinking about the budget and numbers and everything else too, because that's, that's huge. Just my opinion.
So I'd be looking for a motion from someone for us to go out and do the, the call, to do school choice participation in the 2022-2023 school year.
Make a motion to approve the school choice participation for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion made by Lisa, second by?
Second.
By Becky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next thing is the EFDA charge and collection of payment of, for our school meals policy, the second reading. Do we have that? I don't see it in my packet.
I don't see it in my packet.
I didn't see it in one either.
Courtney or Paul, do you have possibly the EFDA?
I do have a copy of it here, we'll have to table it for the next.
Okay, we'll table that.
Unless I had it from March, uh, attachment.
Do you have it?
I do have last, right in front of me, I'm so tired, I couldn't even see it. From last week. Yeah. So, yes, on March 2nd, we did the first reading of the policy EFDA, and as we discussed at the last meeting, this is the recent, Massachusetts Legislature recently enacted the anti-lunch shaming law under Chapter 62 of the Acts of 2021. It contained a number of provisions that prohibits school districts from doing certain things, doing an outstanding lunch debt. So we did amend our current policy with those changes. It only applies to the regular lunch program, lunch and breakfast, it does not apply to the à la carte items. So, under one purpose and policy, we remove the verbiage at the end, to encourage parent guardian to assume responsibility of meal payments, and then we crossed off, and to promote self-responsibility of student, we took that out. We did take out under administration, under free and reduced students, we did take out free lunch status, students will not be allowed to have a negative account balance, free lunch status allows students to receive a free meal every day, which we, we do. And again, about serving, if you have a negative balance or, or maximum dollar equivalent to reduced price meals, you know, we had an account cap, and we had this, you know, the sun butter sandwich, all of that had to be removed, all of that had to be moved. On the entire section, all other students, we moved that entire section, balances owed, removed out, we removed all the sections having to do with students. In other words, having, participating in any fee-based program had to be removed, graduation, exercise, a receipt of diplomas was removed, and land issuance of report cards, transfer cards, class assignments, that was removed. And also under payments, we removed this section there about receiving the cheese sandwich or the sun butter and jelly sandwich, took that all out. And, let me amend the authority, we charge the students lunch, we took that out. And at the very, I think the last change that was made, we took out the, the sentence that seniors must pay all outstanding balances before receiving their capping down. So basically, what the anti-shaming language does, it removes the student responsibility aspect, because it really is truly, as we all know, the parent's responsibility to make payment, and so that way, the student wasn't paying a price in one way or another. So that's all been updated pursuant to the legislation.
Any questions? Okay, next one is the JLCCB life-threatening allergy policy statement, second reading.
Certainly, so just to recap, we recognize that students with life-threatening allergies require reasonable accommodations, we're going to do this in compliance with state and federal guidelines, basically using the document that Desi provided us called managing life-threatening food allergies in, in schools. You know, as the statement says, although we cannot guarantee an allergy-free environment, that is our goal to strive for, we're going to try to minimize the risk to our students with life-threatening allergies, we're going to use the guidelines established in the policy, and we're going to do trainings for personnel, and we're going to make sure that we follow individual care plans to make sure that kids have the ability to safely be in school, access the curriculum, and be with their peers. So just a statement of what, what our beliefs are.
Any questions? Moving on to the school business and operations managers' report.
Unfortunately, I don't have any transfers or reclassifications, I've been concentrating so much on the budget, but I think I'm going to wait, there are some things that I will be updating you on, on some changes that we're seeing with regard to the changes in the world, but I think I'll wait and we'll have that discussion when we're talking about budget.
Okay. Thank you so much, Courtney. Any topics not anticipated? So we are going to have to do intern to executive session this evening to discuss strategy to, with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have been detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the government body, and to, and to conduct collective bargaining to review the contract language and propose revision strategies for a successful completion of the agreement between the Douglas School and the superintendent's of school, Douglas School Committee and the superintendent's of school contract, as well as to discuss the strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on potential litigation position of the government by, the school committee will not be coming back into public session, and we will adjourn from executive session. I'd be looking for a roll call vote to adjourn at, I believe it's 8:55.
Correct.
Becky Charniac, aye.
Lisa Baran, aye.
Monique Salvas, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
What else, what, where do you need more, Courtney?
Almost it.